I call to order the special town meeting of March 28, 2019. And before we begin with the warrant, would you please all rise and join me in a salute to the flag, the government's people who have to. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united cause, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This is preceded. Are there any preliminary motions before we go to Article One? Yes, sir.
I move that to dispense with the reading of the warrant.
Motion made and seconded as read. Discussion? Every man will vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries unanimously. Is there another motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move to dispense with the reading of the articles and reference to them being made by number and content.
Motion made and seconded as read. Discussion? Let's vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries unanimously.
Mr. Moderator, I move that we consider adjournment at 10 p.m.
Motion made and seconded as read. Discussion? Let's vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries unanimously. Article One.
Mr. Moderator, I move to accept the reports of the town officials.
The reports.
Hear the reports.
There's a motion made to hear the reports of the town officials, which has been seconded. Discussion? We'll vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries unanimously. Do the selectmen have a report?
No.
Assessors? School committee? Any other elected official? With their no reports being made, we will go to Article Two.
It's my turn.
Yes, sir.
To transfer free cash in amount of $2,145.99 to pay prior year bills as follows. Dyson Surplus Sales: $11.99. Terminal Exchange: $360. And F.J. Torres: $1,774.
Second. A motion made and seconded as read, and those are all to transfer from available funds, sir?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Is there a recommendation by the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
Okay. Is there any discussion? There are several motions tonight that will require something other than the drawn vote. The first one, a motion to pay prior year's bills at a special town meeting requires a nine-tenths vote. I will first take a voice vote. If the voice vote is anything other than unanimous voice vote, I'll cancel the voice vote, and then we will have the doors closed. I'll ask everybody who remains seated, I'll let the checkers come forward, and then we will take the vote by hand. All in favor of the motion under Article Two say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries unanimously. Article Three.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, sir.
To transfer free cash to sum of $5,000 to replenish account number 010-2-433-17-5300, Household Hazard Waste Collection.
Motion made and seconded as read under Article Three. Is there a Finance Committee recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends.
Thank you. Discussion? Every man will vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries unanimously. Article Four.
Mr. Moderator, I move to...
Yes, ma'am.
...to approve the Conservation Commission and to implement agreement for land management services for the property of Zero Council Oakway for a period not to exceed ten years.
Second. Motion made and seconded as read. Discussion? We'll vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries unanimously. Article Five.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, sir.
To amend town bylaw, Article XXXVI, Departmental Revolving Funds, Section Five, authorizing revolving funds by amending the table on Article Five to include a revolving account for the purpose of accepting funds from the land management agreement for Zero Council Oakway from which funds will be expended by the Conservation Commission.
Motion made and seconded as read, and the table is as printed in the warrant and the written motions that were distributed to all attending. Is that right?
Yes.
Does everybody have a written copy to refer to the table? Is there any discussion? We'll vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries unanimously. Article Six.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, sir.
Vote pursuant to MGL 44, Section 53E and a half, to establish a limit on a total amount that may be expended during FY 2019 from the Council Oakland Management Revolving Fund adopted under Article Five of the warrant as stated in Article Six.
Second. Motion made and seconded as read. Is there any discussion? Let us vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries unanimously. Article Seven.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes.
To transfer from paid access and cable-related funds to be expended by the Cable Television Committee with sum of $20,000 to fund legal services for negotiation of a cable television license.
Second. Motion made and seconded as read. Is there any Finance Committee recommendation on this pending article?
Finance Committee recommends.
Thank you. Discussion? None? We'll vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries unanimously. Article Eight.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, sir.
To transfer from Article Ten of Special Town Meeting of October 15, 2018, a sum of $5,600 to budget 422, I would construction and maintenance upon remaining FY 19 expenses.
Second. Motion made and seconded as read. Is there a Finance Committee recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends.
And is there still a sum of $5,600 in that budget to fund that has not been committed to be spent?
Yes.
Good. Discussion? Every man will vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries unanimously. Nine.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes.
To appropriate from available funds a sum of $60,102 in anticipation of reimbursement to meet the town's share of the costs of the work for state aid construction in fiscal year 2019 for the purpose of expending funds for capital improvements of local roads under Transportation Bond Issue Chapter 90.
Motion made and seconded as read. Is there a Finance Committee recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends.
Very well. Is there any discussion? Let us vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries unanimously. Article Ten.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, sir.
To transfer from free cash to sum of $1,000, $150,000 to purchase the property of 949 Somerset Avenue.
Second. And that amount is $150,000?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion made and seconded. Is there a Finance Committee recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends $145,000.
Is there any discussion?
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Schoolard.
The reason that the board of selectmen is recommending $150,000 is because there are costs associated with this land's purchase, the kind of closing costs, registry fees, legal costs, so that's why we're looking for the extra hundred, excuse me, the extra $5,000.
And if that extra $5,000 is not spent, what happens to it?
It'll close up the free cash.
The free cash. Any other comments, questions? Yes, sir. Could you stand up and tell us your name and address, please?
Yes. Should the town succeed in purchasing the property? I would like to know what is the town going to... What is... How can it be used for?
The question is, if the town purchases the property, what use will it be put to? Mrs. Schoolard?
Yes, this was on the warrant at previous meeting. The reason it was on the warrant then was because it's contiguous to the north side of the town property. It's that little warehouse near the north driveway. It's excellent land, it's on sewer and water, it's relatively flat, and we feel that this is a good opportunity for the town to increase its holding for future use. We are not looking to do anything with it right now except to acquire it, and I will tell you that the price that we're looking at right now is almost half of what it was initially listed for when we wanted to get it a year ago.
The price of the town?
Yes, it did significantly, and this is the only opportunity we have had that I can remember, that the land is right next to, if you will, the town hall campus.
I'm also interested in this part of the town.
I'm sorry?
An interesting aspect of this. This is one of the areas. I think it was built in 1770.
Seventy-seven. Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Yes, sir. Could you stand and tell us your name and address?
Thomas Powers, 535 Tremont Street. Is it possible? I believe it's a nice piece of land that probably is worth that value. I don't know... This is my first time in a town meeting, sorry, Paul. I don't know what the attention of the land is long-term, but that house cannot be repaid, especially for $60,000. I looked at that house, my son is interested in purchasing it. It's termite-ridden, front of the sills all the way up, it's so much mold, and you'd have to tear the house down, so that I don't know in a historic district that's allowed. But that's all.
Schoolard?
Yes. This article... This article is only to purchase the land. We're not talking about the house. Obviously, there's a house there. If we... If this passes tonight, the next article talks about the house, and you'll have a separate... You'll have a chance to vote on whether or not you want to spend money on the house, but this is only to acquire the property.
This is... I just didn't know because of historic, I don't know what the rules are, I don't know if it was allowed to tear the house down, that's why I wasn't talking in the next article.
Mr. Chairman?
I just wanted to say, I don't believe... Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Pacheco, that's not a historic district.
It's not a historic district, but you can't knock down a house in Dyson that's over 100 years old without having delayed the demolition of that building. So we have a six-month delay of a bylaw in town that the historic commission will get involved and see if they can have another use for that building, or they can take it apart and give it to somebody else or whatever. But that's really not anything to do with this article here. Right now, they're talking about circles and all, and it's adjacent to the town property, and it's very valuable to the town.
It's a nice piece of property in the locations that the... I spoke too soon, I'll catch you on the back.
Yes, could you stand and please tell us your name and address?
Tony English, 1374 Prince Street. Could you tell us how much acreage there is there?
Just one acre.
The answer is one acre. Any other questions, or... Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name's Dorverson, 1320 Ryward Drive. I did actually look up the listing before I came to the meeting, and it says it's contingent, so somebody else has a bid on it, so I don't understand how that would work.
We actually... We actually are the ones that have the bid on it. We haven't put any... We haven't put any money down on it, we don't have the right to put any money down on it. Like Mrs. Schoolard had mentioned, a year and a half ago, it was 279, we weren't able to negotiate it to 145, and we're asking for additional $5,000 for the closing costs. So we're the ones that have cut that down.
So you already put a bid on that before we... Before we brought it to town?
Yes, because we had to know what the price was going to be. Now, if the town... I'm supporting it, I think the town should buy it. If the town chooses not to purchase this, that goes away, it hasn't cost the town a cent. We're not allowed, we're not permitted to give them $5,000 to hold on to the house, but they are very well aware of the $145,000 that they have accepted. They have accepted, so...
Even though we haven't put any money down? And we don't know what we want to do with this property?
The purchase and sale agreements contingent by the town's people are going for.
Okay, thank you, yeah, I just wanted to say.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Dave Anderson, 740... I'm not excited. An acre, it is next to the town hall, but it's an expensive acre, and the house is going to be... I think you need to consider the two articles together, because if you don't do the move, things are going to fall down, and the additional expenses will go away.
Mrs. Schoolard?
They have to be two separate articles, and I understand what you're saying, but to address your concern, we know what we're going to do with the land. If we get it, we, the town, we're going to hold on to it and determine what we want to do with it. It may be just for the time being mow the grass, like the rest of the campus around town hall. However, there is a building on it, and a decision will have to be made. Okay, we bought the land, now what do we do with the building? And there is that bylaw, that's, I think it's a six-month wait period. If the decision is made after the six-month period to take the house down, a bid will go up to demolish it. Now, I can tell you, the last large property that the town took down was actually five buildings, and that went out to bid, and the cost to demolish five buildings, which was a house of bomb and three... I'll call it chest, was just over $21,000, so it's not going to cost an arm and a leg. But the feeling is, general consensus, especially what the board has seen, this is a very valuable piece of property to the town of Dyson, and we were looking for a spot for the police station. Unfortunately, that wasn't for sale, but we looked up and down Somerset Avenue because we wanted to do our water and sewer, and we were fortunate, land was donated.
This is one of the articles that I referenced earlier tonight that will require something other than the drawn vote. Indeed, this will require a two-thirds vote. Start with a voice vote. If it is other than unanimous, I'll cancel it and go through the voting method by hand that I described earlier. All in favor of the motion under Article Ten say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? There is not a unanimous vote. I would ask the checkers to close the doors, come forward. I would like to have a head count as to the number of registered voters who have checked in, and I would ask the checkers to come forward to the podium here for assignment on how to come vote. Which... Could all of you checkers please come forward, we're going to count. Okay. Can you please count? Does anyone point the board?
I was not...
Can I have Mr. Pacheco? All right. I was not visually looking at who it is to vote it, looking down to listen, but with that, what I will do, instead of first canceling the voice vote and taking the hand count, instead I am going to cancel the voice vote and take a second voice vote. So the checkers, please stay here, and I am going to take the vote under Article Ten by voice a second time. All those in favor of the motion under Article Ten say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The voice vote is unanimous. Thank you, checkers, and we return to your votes. Carries unanimously Article Eleven.
Mr. Moderator, I move to transfer free cash to sum of $60,000 to repair the roof on the property of 949 Somerset Avenue into the Indian Interior District.
That motion fails for lack of a second. Article Twelve.
Mr. Schoolard? I move to transfer free cash to sum of $35,000 for the purchase of land on Brook Street listed as map 13 lot 92 and is further described in book 8237, page 255, in the Bristol County Registry of Deeds.
If there is a motion made and seconded under Article Twelve as read, is there a Finance Committee recommendation? Finance Committee has no recommendation on that. There's no recommendation by the Finance Committee? Is there discussion? Mr. Chairman?
So I just wanted to say, the board of selectmen did recommend this. I abstained from voting, so I'm actually wanting to hear what everyone thinks about this. Also, maybe an explanation of this article.
Mrs. Schoolard?
Yes, this piece of property is... If you're standing on the Brook Street Bridge facing west, as if you're going to Pine Street, and you're right up against the railing on your right, and you're right over the Segregance River, the property is basically the west half of the river going out roughly 300 feet to the western boundary. It goes back, I think it's almost two acres. This property was available when we did the Brook Street Bridge. I brought it to the attention of the board of selectmen at that time and also the Water District. The decision was made not to bring that forward, to apply the property. The property is owned by NRG, even though it's under the name of Montauk, the old electric company. So during one of the meetings we had, I happened to mention that this property was available years ago because the town has been acquiring property protected. The western side of this property would be excellent for open space and for recreation, and we have acquired some property like that. NRG is again looking to sell this property, and so we had the property appraised, the sale... And if we end up accessing that gift sometime in the future, these will almost connect so that residents could actually walk from upper Brook Street, maybe from the Somerset land, to out to Main Street on town land. So this would be quite a, I'll call it hiking trail, open space area.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Yes, ma'am.
Tony English, 1374 Pine Street. I think residents would love to use the land, will it be maintained in some format like road or, you know, that sort of thing?
We have a trails committee, and if the town buys this piece of property, I would assume that the town, the trails committee would be involved in whether to market out hiking trails and things of that nature, so that people could go out and walk as a matter of fact, could be along the river and see what grows on the river, what wildlife is. So it's, you know, nature things, you could... Bursts. I mean, there's so much that could be done, because it is pretty wild, I mean undeveloped.
That's why I have a concern about a little bit of nature, so that we can walk through there.
Well, I think that's what our trails committee will be working on, the land that we own.
Ferry?
Yes, Sam Ferry, 1070 Williams Street. This piece of property is, for us that have been in Dyson for quite a while, is known as the Heron Run. This is where the brackish water mixes with the fresh water in the Segi River. I don't believe there's any other spot in the Segi River that is open to the public except inside a Segregance Park, and that's just fresh water there. So it's a unique ecosystem happening there, and if it becomes private, someone's going to have free access, and if there is a trail there now, it would be easy to maintain casually, and I wouldn't take much effort at all.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Any other questions, comments, or discussion? Yes?
Mia Harles, 2651 Pleasant Street. I'm with Schoolard. You said that it was previously for sale. Do you know if it's been for sale continuously throughout this, like how long has that ever been?
When I say... When I say previously for sale, I was the liaison for the birth... Well, that doesn't agree. Brook Street Bridge, working with the board of selectmen, and it took a while to determine who owned it. When I finally got it down to the NRG, which is the big energy company, I had to negotiate an easement for the town, because we needed an easement for the bridge. And in the course of the discussion with the gentleman who handled real estate on the east coast of NRG, he said, by your way, if you're interested, if you're interested, meaning the town, we'd be willing to sell that. That bridge was, Mr. Ferry, 2012? Somewhere around there? And I took it to the board of selectmen, and I also mentioned it to, I think it was the Water District. But anyhow, what the selectmen did was said, we're not going to act on it now, but we're going to send a letter, which they did, to NRG saying, if this property is ever put officially for sale, town of Dyson wants first option. So when the discussion came up, and I have to mention what happened back in 2012, there was interest in the town, and so I got in touch with the rep from NRG and said, we're interested. Are you interested in selling? And he said, yeah. And so we've done the work to have it appraised, to determine what it's worth. The selling price is less than the appraisal, that's good, and so we're bringing it here tonight, because we think it's a good opportunity for the town.
Thank you.
So was it ever, like, listed for sale?
No.
Or was something, we went out and were like, hey, we might be interested in this?
Literally, I stumbled on it, but I had to negotiate the agreement. The gentleman was in a dress, I told him what we needed, they agreed to the easement we needed, and it was just in the course of a casual discussion, he said he'd be interested.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
Mr. Moderator, what? Robert Woods, 158 Chase Street. I was just wondering if the Conservation Commission has considered buying this property, and do they know about it?
Yes, we've had discussions with the Conservation Commission, and they support this. We brought it forth to the town speaker, because we thought that was the best route to go, again, open space and trails.
I think the question, though, is, did the Conservation Commission itself instead of purchasing the property with its own funds?
Right.
Which it does have its own account to purchase property? You know if that occurred?
Mr. Correct?
Mr. Woods, Mr. for that. Mr. Woods had a question about whether or not the Conservation Commission ever considered buying this parcel of land with funds in the Conservation Commission account.
No, we haven't.
The answer is no.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Anybody else? Mr. Pacheco?
Yeah. Father's only half the river, I think that belongs to the town of Somerset, not to the... Not to that property.
We researched the deeds back in 2012 when I was trying to get that easement, and there are deeded in it, there are water rights for this piece of property. The other, upon the east side of the river, and all the land around the east side belongs to the town of Somerset, but this one piece of property belongs to NRG, and this is what they're offering to the town.
Mr. Ryan?
Timmy, that's Timmy the uprights for 16 measures, that went to my question. Years ago, was that property that the old Heron Run used to be working at that time, who was the property owner on that? Who maintained that? And if the town does purchase this property, we'll be looking at redoing and installing that Heron Run again, because they have a new run up there, as Mr. Ferry said.
Well, Mr. Moderator, if I will, please.
You want to answer that question?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I think it was around 2003, 2005, I was actively helping to Boy Scout rebuild that Heron Run, with help from... It was a local builder helped it, I can't think of the name right now, but we rebuilt that Heron Run back then, so I'm very familiar with the area, and the Heron are coming back, and I'm very curious as to why conservation is not more involved in this, because I would like to see that land bought by conservation, bought by CPC, so it can be used as conservation land, because once the town of Dyson gets it, yeah, they can say they're going to have a trails committee do this and that, but then they could not. But if it's bought by conservation, it can be used by conservationists, and not just passive recreation, because some of these trails committees and such, they don't want hunters, they don't want fishermen, they don't want nothing like that, but there's a lot of wildlife there. When I was probably less than 10 years old, we used to harvest smelt there on the first full moon in March. So, I mean, I've been going to that area my entire life, and it's right across the street from this gentleman's house, so I don't know if he wants to have a parking lot across the street from his house. So I don't know if he wants to have a parking lot across the street from his house. I'm not sure. I haven't had it. But there are other avenues that we could go for funding for this, and I think it's a good purchase. I just don't know if it's good to use the town's money. We could possibly use Conservation money, which I think is where it should come from. But if not, we could also use CPC money. Because we have plenty of money in CPC for open space and conservation. That's all I have, thank you.
If I, allow me to ask some questions. Mr. Reins, are you still on CPC?
Correct.
Do you know about how much money is in the CPC account now?
Three quarters of a million dollars.
All right. And Mr. Perry, do you know how much money is in the Conservation, come on, account?
Know that. Yes, I do. Thirty-eight thousand dollars.
Thank you for those answers. Mr. Chairman.
I'm going to ask this through you, if it's okay, Mr. Moderator. We have members of the trails committee. I don't mean to put them on the spot. My understanding of the purpose of the trails committee was to think about designing contiguous trails, not to physically go out and maintain property. So is there a way we could ask the members present if that is actually their job?
Mr. Chair, would you wish to address that? Give me a minute, if you could. Stand up and tell us who we are and what you're with and what you do.
I'm Chris Shannon, eh, thirteen-seventy, Pleasant Street. I actually have resigned from the committee, but it isn't effective yet, so.
While you're on the spot.
But the, the whole point is to try to network with people to, to get powers, to get permission to do trails. We're not, we're not looking to mow anything like that. We, that's too much work.
So the trail committee is not empowered to maintain the trails, or is it?
We might organize volunteer cleanups and such like that, but we're not, we're volunteers, we're not looking to.
You don't mow and blaze trails?
Right.
Okay. Thank you very much. Mr. Goulart?
I want to address the question that Mr. Woods had. The reason why we didn't ask Conservation outright to consider this purchase is because of the water rights. If the Town of Dyton acquires this property, the water rights go to the Town of Dyton. We're not looking to develop them at this point, but this town is growing. And if Conservation acquires the property, the land will have a conservation restriction. So in the future, if the Town of Dyton needs water, or the Dyton Water District needs water, depending upon who's servicing this with water at the time, it will be difficult to do anything because of the conservation restriction. So that's the only reason why we didn't approach Conservation first.
Mr. Moderator, I don't know how many years ago this goes back, it goes back before my time. Somerset bought the water rights from the Town of Dyton many years ago. And then after a while, the Town of Dyton tried to get those water rights back, and we had a court battle. They spent a hundred thousand, we spent ten thousand. We lost. That's their water, and I'd like to see something written that says, it's not. Because I don't believe that we're entitled to any of that water. Now, in another breath, I would say, yes, let's buy this land, but I don't mean throwing the water on us, because I, I don't, I don't think Somerset is going to allow that. They own that water, they own the rights, they own the land going up that way. Am I correct? So, with that said, I'd like to make the motion to table.
Second.
As you know, Mr. Woods, motions to table are non-discussion motions.
Do I say it in the end?
And you know that I do not allow motions to table where one has already given the reasons in advance of making the motion. So respectfully, the motion to table is out of order. Thank you.
May I ask counsel to speak on this? Mr. Paul, Jerry counsel? I believe he has the deed.
On the, on the water issue?
If he has the deed, right.
I, I will ask Mr. Costa if he is prepared to tell us a little opinion about it. If he is unprepared, we will not hold it against him. And give him an opportunity to perhaps look at it a little bit. Counsel?
So I can speak just briefly on part of the water rights issue. That's an issue that if the town wanted to develop it, it would require some legal study and research. But just on the point that was made from the floor about the Town of Somerset's rights, what I can tell you is that the Town of Somerset acquired, and I'm familiar with the litigation between the Dyton Water District and the Town of Somerset over water rights. And I'm also familiar with the, the deeded rights that go to the Town of Somerset from Montauk Electric. So without getting into, I don't want to give you the impression that this is, this is a conclusive legal opinion. But just on the question of the extent of the Town of Somerset's rights, those rights were subject to the right of the Montauk Electric Company to withdraw one-point-six-million gallons of water a day from the river. So the Town of Somerset, when they fought with the thing, wanted, it was over the remaining balance. So that land, according to the deed, which we would have to study further, I just want to make it clear that the Town of Somerset didn't have exclusive rights to the water historically, and that the Montauk Electric Company had rights to withdraw water from the river. And that right appears to run with the land. I can't go any further than that with an opinion. If the town ever wanted to withdraw water, we'd have to look into it a lot, in a lot more detail. The law has changed since nineteen sixty-two on the rights to withdraw water. There were specific descriptions of what the water was for, that Montauk Electric would withdraw the water for. But the Town of Somerset didn't have rights to a hundred percent of the water. So that's in a nutshell, all I can really say about that issue.
Thank you. I'm going to call for, Mr. Reins, you have the final word.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My question is, is that if we, we're to purchase this property, is there a deadline on when it needs to be purchased? And if the townspeople decide not to purchase it, I believe that the CPC could probably fast-tracks and want us at the town meeting to possibly purchase the property. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Like at the annual meeting?
At the annual town meeting, correct.
Thank you. Sorry, Mr. Goulart, calling for a vote.
I was just going to answer his question.
I think it was more of a statement.
But no, it was a question about that, Mr. Moderator. Is there a deadline on when that property needs to be purchased?
Is there a deadline, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I've got to get back to the gentleman tonight and tell him what happens, but that doesn't mean it's over.
So there is no deadline, okay. This is one of those motions that's going to require a two-thirds vote. I'm going to take a voice vote, if it is other than a unanimous voice vote, we'll take a hand count. All in favor of the motion under Article twelve, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
I'll have the, it was not unanimous, so I'll have the checkers come forward, and if there is a new count. May I have your attention? We're going to take a hand count. I have three checkers. The checker in the purple blouse will be checking the right side of the room, including those standing in the back who are eligible to vote. The checker in the gray sweater will be checking the votes on the front two tables for the eligible voters. And, Mr. Pacheco, do you have a point of order?
Yes, do you have someone that's not a voter standing in the back?
We know that. I just made that.
Move to another area.
Stand there, would you? Are there any other attendees tonight who are not registered voters in Dyton? Okay. Okay, not administrative. Yes. I apologize. Those, at least three of the non-voters are very well-known to our checkers as not being registered voters in town. But, Mr. Pacheco, thank you for pointing that out to the rest of us. And the checker in black will be checking the left side. We're going to go row by row. Please keep your hand held high until the checker has passed. All those in favor of the motion, please signal your vote by raising your hand and keeping it up till the checker walks past your row. Okay, now, checkers, please stay here. All those opposed to the motion, please raise your hands now. Keep, yes, go ahead, make hand count. Thank you. Good, thank you. There are sixty-two registered, or there are sixty-two people who have registered to enter the meeting tonight. The vote fails. There were nineteen in favor and thirty-five opposed, and the sum total of those two months is less than sixty-two. Article thirteen. Is there a motion?
Moderator?
Yes, ma'am.
I move to accept provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter forty-one, Section one-ten-A, which states, any public office in any city or town remain, may remain closed on any or all Saturdays, as may be determined from time to time in a city by the city council, subject to the provisions of the city charter, or in a town by vote of the town at a special or regular town meeting. And the provisions of Section nine of Chapter four shall apply in the case of such closing of any such office on any Saturday, to the same extent as if such Saturday were a legal holiday. Second.
Motion made and seconded as read. Discussion? Yes, ma'am.
What?
Stand up and tell us your name.
Do I have to stand up?
Yes, please stand up, tell us your name and address, and if you would, would you please pose a question?
Uh, Rebecca Torgerson, thirteen-twenty, Brever Drive. I couldn't understand what you were saying.
I'm so sorry.
Like, it just, it was sounding like words, nothing really connected.
Do you have a copy of the?
I do, but I, I can't understand it. Like, I don't know why, but my focus is not on it. So maybe like a short.
What, what it is, in a nutshell, is that we would treat Saturday as a holiday for voter registration, nomination papers, that type of thing. And I'll just give you a little quick history on this. We do believe that this was accepted back in nineteen seventy-eight, seventy-seven. But after doing some research with the Secretary of State's office, which he, just about every city and town accepted it, and checking the town council, I couldn't find that we accepted it. I'm, I'm sure we did, because we've been following it since before I came here. But I just felt to be on the safe side, I wanted to accept it again, just in case, you know, so.
Yeah, I just wrapped my ring around what was said.
Any other comments or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Fourteen. Is there a motion?
Motion to a chair?
Well, I'm going to move that out of order, and I ask for a motion to dissolve.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the special town meeting be dissolved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to dissolve the special town meeting. It's a non-discussion motion. We're going to stretch your vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And carries. Thank you. Good evening.